At the end, if you have a cellphone, we would request that you either turn it off, turn it down, and if you have to take a phone call, please step out into the audience, out into the hall so we don't disrupt the audience. Okay, I'm going to open the beginning of the zoning board of adjustment, and the first item on that agenda is the adjustment minutes. Anybody would like to approve the last?
To approve.
Thank you. Steve made a motion to approve that, and Mike Kozny seconded it. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, we will now go to the item, item two.
From eight feet to three feet for a proposed carport property is located at 524 Mall Drive. Property is currently zoned low-density residential district, as are the surrounding properties. Here we have an aerial view showing a single-family home located on the property. You'll notice that front yard is Mall Drive, and the backyard, there's another street, Crazy Horse Street. The applicant's proposing to build a carport over the existing parking pad located on the property. Future land use of the property is low-density neighborhood, so a single-family dwelling and a detached garage would be permitted uses in that district. Here we have the major street plan. Property is located west of Haynes Avenue, which is identified as a principal arterial street, but you can see that Mall Drive is identified as a proposed minor arterial street. The significance of that being that a minor arterial street requires a minimum right-of-way width of 100 feet. There's an existing right-of-way width of 80 feet, meaning that should Mall Drive be built, needed to be built out to arterial street standards, an additional 10 feet of right-of-way would be needed, and so the proposed carport with a five-foot setback would be within that area. Here we have the site plan submitted by the applicant. It's a proposed 18-by-20 carport, open-sided, five foot on the front, three feet on the rear. There is currently a wide boulevard between the property line and the paved street. However, as I noted, being a minor arterial street, in the future, it may, the city may be, may have to go in and purchase an additional 10 feet of right-of-way from the property in order to be able to build it out. And here we have applicant's photo showing the location of the existing parking pad and the, where the carport would go. Staff photos from the other day, looking into the property to the north. Adjacent property is vacant, as is the one to the west, but there are single-family dwellings located in this area. Looking west along Mall Drive at current conditions, and to the east towards Haynes Avenue, and this is looking directly to the south, another single-family development. Reasonable use of the land exists. Staff is recommending that the variance request be denied, and the applicant is in the audience if you have any questions. Are there any questions for staff at this time?
I don't see any. Thanks for the presentation. Anybody have any comments on this item? Mike Kozny.
I guess I do have a question on that. Is there room? The way it looks to me, it looks like he could still put it further back by extending his pad, or their pad, if they so desired, and then it wouldn't affect the, if the city has to buy the property.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
As this photograph shows, there is a grassy area that could be, the concrete pad could be extended to the front of the residence. I'm not sure what that length is on it. Maybe the applicant can assist us with that. I believe that she's here in the audience today. And again, as Fletcher noted, certainly the carport is a minimal encroachment, however, if it should be that the city should have to purchase right-of-way, any structural development that we allow, that's just additional monies that the taxpayers have to pay in removing that structure, and then the structure would have to be removed anyway. So by getting it located where it could get preserved, not just now, but in the future for any future needs, might be cost-saving for both the applicant and the city.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. I'm going to go to the, you are the applicant.
Yes, I'm Lorraine. Thank you.
Could you, could you state your name clearly for the record?
Lorraine Treeboss.
Thank you.
Yes. The reason I wanted it there was because otherwise, if you move it up to that grassy knoll, then when you look out your living room window, you're looking right into your vehicle. And that's why I wanted to set there, and I thought with 30 foot off the street already, before it ever reaches my property line, that I would have plenty of room if I set it in another five foot to allow for the 10 foot if the city would need to take it. And it's just kind of like to get some protection for my vehicles, because I've had two have hail damage in the last four years that I've lived there, so.
Okay.
That's what was my feeling on.
Okay, is there anything else you wanted to give to us as a committee?
No, I guess not. No, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Steve.
When you look at that, it does look like there's a lot of space. I'm assuming if we're going to be buying property, we're going to be buying it from both sides of the road, but my question is, how far back is she setting it currently?
How far, what, yes, what setting back?
My question's for staff here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I want to know how far back that's set. I'm sorry.
Proposed setback is five feet. How far back is the house?
50 feet? I'm sorry, didn't hear that.
It appears to be somewhere around 50 feet.
All right, thank you.
It's about 100-foot long lot.
Okay, Kurt.
So it would only have to be moved back five feet farther towards the house in order to be out of that 10-foot potential right-of-way?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have any comments on this? I'll just make a comment. It just seems odd to have that carport way out by the street like that, you know? Most carports are close to the house and kind of are unobtrusive, and this seems to be almost right in your path as you're driving down the road. It's just an odd spot for, you know, for me to think of a carport, so that's my comment. Steve.
I kind of agree with what you said there. Now, so if she would move it five feet back, then, then everything would be okay, or no?
So her requirement is, is that it be 25 feet back, because it's a accessory structure. Pushing it back 10 feet, she would still need a variance to reduce the 25-foot setback to 10 feet. And you could do that today, because she's advertised for five feet, and you're granting something that would be less than what is requested.
I guess my question would be to her. I mean, I'd be okay with that, so I, do you understand what they're saying?
Yes, they're requesting, requesting I go five foot closer towards the house than what my variance requested.
How many feet back for the, would we be okay with, Vicki? Is it five or 10 feet?
Steve, I'm not understanding the question.
You know, you just said a few minutes ago, if you want to give her a 10-foot variance, how many feet back does she need to go? Is it five feet?
10 feet.
She needs to move it back 10 feet.
She would move it back five feet. She's proposing to set it back five feet. I understand your question now.
All right, and I'm asking, I was asking her if she'd be okay with that, because I could support that. Do you, are you okay with that?
Yes, I, yes. I could probably make that work and just move it up five more feet.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
For anyone that's thinking of making a motion, the unique circumstance that should be cited in order to support a variance, there is a street to the north and a street to the south. So she's got 25-foot setbacks on both ends of that property, and that is unique in this situation.
Thank you, Vicki.
That would be my motion.
Okay. Steve made a motion to reduce the setback of variance, to reduce the setback 10 feet with the fact that it's a unique property that has two roads, front and back, and it's kind of a unique situation. Yes, on, right?
To reduce the front yard setback from 25 feet to 10 feet.
Thank you. Add that to the motion. Okay. That's Steve's motion, and who seconded it? Kurt did? Okay. Any other discussion on that item? Okay.
Madam Chair?
Oh, sorry.
Fletcher just corrected me. This is an arterial street. It is a detached accessory structure. The requirement is it be set back 35 feet. So if the motion maker would do a friendly amendment and clarify that the reduction is from 35 feet to 10 feet.
Wow, okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Motion maker, seconded it?
Fletcher's also identified that she requested a sideyard variance as well, from eight foot to three foot. There are no easements on that lot line. That's an older plat, and our main issue was with the front yard based on future improvements on Mall Drive.
Okay, so we need to also include the sideyard setback on that motion.
Anything else, Fletcher, before we do that?
Okay. Does everybody understand the motion? Okay, all those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, and thank you, Madam Tree, I'm not going to pronounce it.
Lorraine.
Lorraine, yes. Thank you. Okay. Anything else for the zoning board of adjustment? I'll take a motion to close that hearing.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you. Steve made the motion to adjourn, and Rachel seconded it.
Yep.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, now we will go on to the planning commission meeting for September 21st. Items one through seven have been placed on the consent calendar and may be approved as a group. Action will be taken on all consent items in accordance with the staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration at this time. The findings of the planning commission will our recommendations to the City Council, and the City Council will make the final decision with the exception of the following items. That would be item 3, 17 PD 044, and item 7, 17 UR 020. Rapid City Planning Commission's actions on these items are final unless all party, or any party appeals that decision to the Rapid City Council, and all appeals must be submitted in writing to the Community Planning and Development Services Department by the close of business day on the seventh full calendar day following the action today. Are there any items one through seven that staff would like to have removed? Are there any items from the planning commission that we'd like to have removed?
Move to approve.
Wait, hold on. Any items from the audience? I don't see any of those, but they're, pardon? Okay, Mike.
Poll seven, please.
Which is?
Seven.
Seven? Okay, seven. And there's an item that I need to recuse myself from, and that would be three.
Okay, move to approve succession of item three and seven.
All right.
Second.
And Galen, Steve made that motion to approve, and Galen seconded it. All those in favor of approving all the items on the consent calendar with the exception of three and seven, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, item three is just for me to recuse myself, and I just want to make that known. So if somebody would like to make a motion for item three, that would be great.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Steve and Mike made a motion to approve item number three. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Item seven, Mike.
I just wanted to verify, it looks like the signage is all taken care of. There's not a problem with the signage, because we've had issues with those in the
The signage is in compliance, even supports the comprehensive plan goal of not having pole signs on entrance corridors. There's a proposed ground sign located on Marlin Drive, which would be on the south side of the property, not on Elkvale Road. So, yeah, the signage is in compliance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I would, will to approve, then.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Mike made the motion to approve item number seven, and Rachel seconded it. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we will now go on to the regular item agendas. The first item is item number eight.
The applicant has requested that this item be withdrawn, and if you could acknowledge that, please.
Move to withdraw.
Steve made the motion to withdraw that item, and Galen seconded it. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion then passes. Okay, we are now at item nine, and I also need to recuse myself from this one, so I am going to turn the chair over to Steve, and I'm going to step down.
Item number nine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number nine is an initial and final plan development to construct a hotel located east of Mount Rushmore Road and north of Moon Meadows Drive, and with that, I'd like So the property is located south of Katrin Boulevard. Its current zoning is general commercial. It sits within a planned development designation. The hotel itself is a permitted use in the general commercial district, but because it is in a PD designation, it requires that a final plan development be approved prior to issuance of a building permit. The aerial of the property, you can see that this is not a platted lot today. They are working with the city on a, an application to create a lot that would align with the meets and bounds boundaries presented for the outline of the future development of the hotel. Future land use plan identifies this as a mixed-use commercial area. These are the kinds of uses that we would anticipate in this area. Mount Rushmore Road is also an entrance corridor and a gateway into the Black Hills as well as into Rapid City. Mount Rushmore Road is also a principal arterial street, as is Moon Meadows Drive. Again, that does support the commercial activity that we anticipate will happen within this The layout of the hotel, as you can see it up against Mount Rushmore Road, and they have been working with the city staff on the location of that access point off of Moon Meadows Drive, and I believe just this week, we've come to some agreements on that, so you will be seeing a plat in the near future to create a lot that would secure the access and designate the boundaries of the project for the hotel. In laying this out, they did a great job meeting the setbacks, exceeding what was needed for parking. They have a very creative landscape plan. You can see, maybe you can't see from that, but I'll point out that it also has a pool on the north side. There is a screening fence around the pool to provide the security that's needed for it. There's also an opaque fence around the dumpster. So again, they've done a very good job looking at our regulations and trying to hit all the marks to ensure that it does meet those design standards. As a part of their application, however, they were asking for a height exception. The standard design for a Glow Hotel, and this is a 79-unit facility, it's four stories, which the 45 feet, four stories is allowed in general commercial, but they have got what they refer to as the blade. And the blade design is this feature right here, and that's something that is standard to the Glow facilities. It would sit 56-foot high. They externally light the darker area so that it lights blue into the night sky, and then the glow sign itself is internally lit. It would stand 10-foot high by four-foot wide, and this distance is arched, but it's about 100 feet. As we've brought to your attention on several other applications in this area, whenever you're along a gateway in an entrance corridor based on our comprehensive plan, they encourage us to look at low-profile designs. In particular, signage should be ground signs, not pole signs. This sign would actually be located 45 feet, starting at the bottom, up to right under 56 feet. In addition, lighting is something that would be of concern. Dark skies need to be preserved along this area, and the overall design of the structure should maintain that low-profile design. When the applicants received our staff report, and when they also became aware that the neighbors had voiced concern, some of those public comments have been attached. There's also a recent handout from Casey Peterson identifying some of the concerns the neighborhood have expressed to him and to us. They came back in, this is an elevation that they gave us last week to show what that would look like. It is a beautiful building. Our concern is the location of the building and preserving that low-profile design in a scenic byway as it serves as a gateway into the hills. So yesterday, they brought in an alternate design. It would set 45 feet, 10 and seven fifths inches, 10 and three-quarter inches, higher than what would be allowed. It would run a distance of 95 feet from here to here. It would include some signage. They would have a screen of sorts above the top, so that even though the top would be illuminated, it would be capped so it would shine down. Our concern, however, is not so much with the height. I think that's a small intrusion. You may remember that recently, you have reviewed other hotels that have similar parapets, and those parapets serve as the identification to the public that are maybe traveling throughout the parking lot, looking where to park, right where the entrance is. You see that high peak, maybe you're looking at the backside of it? And this is an elevation of what I'm referring to. The face of the building would be to the south, so when you're heading south on Mount Rushmore Road, you would see the backside of it, and that would be this element right However, in granting those other height exceptions for parapets, the two elements that were not included on any of the other applications, those parapets were not lit, and they did not include signage. So again, I think that they've done a great job trying to compromise in minimizing the profile of the building. The concern is still with the lighting and with the signage that high on the building. So there's quite a few of them here that are representing the applicant, and I encourage you to take their testimony, and then if you've got questions back for me, I would like to answer them, and I'm going to run through some outdoor graphics. This is looking east along Mount, Moon Meadows Drive. There's some existing residential development to the east. The future land use plan shows that there's great areas that will, in the future, develop out as residential. You may remember that here a while back, you approved a 160-unit apartment building on the south side of Moon Meadows Drive. Again, trying to minimize the impact of commercial adjacent to residential. Our comprehensive plan challenges us to maintain those low profiles and to minimize that impact that lighting and signage would impose upon that residential use. This is looking west. You can see the Forest Service Building there in the right-hand side of the screen. Looking south on Moon Meadows Drive, drops off the hill right into Reptile Gardens, and then looking north, and right behind that tree, a little bit further to the north, is about the location of this building. So with that, I encourage you to take some testimony, and then we can visit again.
Thank you. I've got four speaker requests, so I'll go with those, and I'll come back to the panel. First one I have is Kathy Peterson. Come up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Kathy Peterson. I live on Dreamscape Road, which is east of where the proposed hotel is. So basically, when you were looking down Moon Meadows Road to the east, you're facing our house. Again, Vicki did a really nice job of presenting that, and our main concern, again, is the lighting, like she stated. This is a high area where they're proposing this hotel, and so this lighting will shine quite brightly, and I understand it's LED lighting. It's going to be very bright in this area, so that's really a concern of ours and of the neighborhood out there, that that lighting be somehow directed down, you know, minimize it as much as possible. It's already bright out there. It's just going to get brighter, and it's just going to be a hardship for the neighborhood and those that are living out there now, and also the apartments and everything that's going to be put in there in the future. So that was our big concern. The height was already addressed, so that was nice that they had decided to lower that height. So appreciate your time. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Kathy. Next, I have Mike, and I'm not sure how you pronounce your last name, so I'll let you do that for me.
Good morning. My name's Mike Tuohy. I'm with KTM Design Solutions here in Rapid. We've been working with Consolidated Construction and a design team to get the Glow Hotel up and off the ground. Couple things to note, the original hotel, we've been working with the Glow brand to try to reduce everything about their signature logo, how the building looks. Couple points, originally, they wanted nine-foot ceilings in the rooms, 12-foot in the main floor. We worked back through them to lower that to eight-foot and 11-foot in order to try to help keep the overall height of the building down. The original blade on the top was 12-foot tall. We, again, worked with them through, early in the design, to try to get the reduced height down. In conversations over the past few days, once we saw the comments that were being made by the neighbors, we realized that the height was a big thing. We went back to the Glow and asked how we could fix this. Obviously, the, this email that Vicki discussed, that we gave to her yesterday, giving us, we were, we're about 10 and three-quarter inches, I'd just say 11, high. As part of, as part of the lighting concerns, we're looking to address those, the upper railing, and if, Stan, if you could, Vicki, can you help me run this? I'd like to, I'd like to show that the lighting on the top of the, on the top of the parapet for the Glow, this is Stan, he has one of the speaker request forms, he's here as the Okay, so the, as we lowered the parapet down, or the blade down, one of the considerations and one of the things that we looked at is how to keep the light off of protruding out and, and becoming invasive. So this area up here, that, there's a clamp up here, that will actually be on the south face of the building. There is about a four or five-inch wide, you can kind of see here, a four, five-inch wide light, and then to not send the light or, or point the light out toward the street, this edge, it's kind of serves as a glow shield. Am I close?
Yeah, this is Stan Remaker, the architect on the project. It doesn't really show up very good on there. It doesn't really show up very well on, on the larger thing there, but underneath here, there are small
But underneath here, there are small little lights, LED lights, that will be shining completely down on what we call the blade.
We don't have a, we couldn't get a rendering done in time. I wish we could. One of the other things, in order to help with the lights, we have gone back to the glow chain. And all of our lights on the exterior of the building are going to, we're adding dimmers to them. The intent is to try to reduce that. As we've been discussing, like, maybe same with the key codes. At eleven o'clock, when the key cards come on, the lights dim down. The drawing, the rendering that you have seen is really a marketing rendering. I've been told by our electrical engineers that it's not what it's shown. It is a marketing rendering. I really wish we would have had the time to put something together and bring forth to you today. But my understanding is, the lighting is not what's shown in that marketing document. With that, I'm here for questions. I know that the current landowner and future adjacent landowner is also here and is a speaker requestant, too. So anything I can offer at this time?
I still have the speaker request for Stan. Stan, are you going to?
No, I'm just here to ask, answer any other technical questions you may have.
Thank you. We'll get back to you. I've got one more speaker request, and then I'll let the questions come from the... Kent Haig.
Good morning. My name is Kent Haig. A manager member of the Alta Terra Development Company LLC that is developing the land. Haig Brothers LLC is the owner of the land, and a manager member of that also. And one of the manager members of KBR LLC, which is the applicant. So it depends on which side of my face I'm talking out of. You'll know. The lighting, after I understood and saw latter, in the latter part of the development process, exactly how this thing, under the promotional, like Mike was mentioning, the promotional material shows this thing big and bright. Well, okay. I've got a one-hundred-and-sixty-unit upscale apartment complex we're building directly east of this, just slightly southeast of it. I didn't like that idea. So I echo what Petersons and many others are seeing out there. I don't want that in my, and the people that live in that apartment complex are not going to want to have, you know, that shining in their windows all the time. So with that, we started to think about, how do we get that down? And what you see today is a marked improvement from what you were showing on the view, viewer of what the promotional hotel was, promotional picture was. The light dampener has a shield that you saw, a picture earlier, has a shield that raises and lowers, but has the LEDs that go straight down. So there's, as opposed to in the past, or in the other renderings, light would have shined, shown up onto the blade, the parapet, where you have a lot of dispersment up into the night sky as well. That'll be essentially eliminated, which I was very happy to hear. Best Western, this is, as with most franchisors, is very, are very proud of their designs, and they don't like deviation from their designs. So it wasn't easy, but we kept at them. And frankly, also through the city process, we have been successful in bringing Best Western to the table. We had a conference call the other day, and they had their corporate engineer on the call and some decision makers. And I said, we've got to do something here. Let's see some different, it's yes or no. And right now, I'm one of the noes, frankly, unless we do something here. So they went to the drawing board and lowered the parapet several feet. It was a total of a, how many, ten, eleven feet? So now we don't have that so obtusive into the skyline. But then the lighting, which is not necessarily a direct issue with the exception request, but it is a real issue. So when they addressed that to the sense of using these light dampeners, not only on this parapet, but also on the lighting for the parking, to use the latest technology on keeping that light facing down and minimally intrusive. And then the fact that there are the other lights on the building that would be on the east side, because that's where the residents are, in addition to those and the top lights, they're allowed and agreed to allow the installation of dimmers. So I think Best Western really stepped up. I was frankly surprised from the prior hard line that they've taken. But I'm comfortable with it as somebody who's going to have a significant investment in apartments to the east. And the, again, the height, I think, is they brought it down very, very reasonably. It's less high than the Holiday Inn Express that went in over on Buffalo Crossing. And it'll be less high than the apartment complex that's already been approved. Thank you. Do you have any other questions?
Yeah, I'll look at the group here. So I'll start off with Mike Cozy.
First up, I'd like to compliment you for taking the steps to try to address the issues as they came up. You know, we have a comprehensive plan. And I think it's important at some time that we go after this comprehensive plan and make it work. We spend a lot of time and money, as the city has, trying to make this. And I think it's important that the businesses get involved in it. And I think that's where our success is going to be coming, is when the businesses are involved in our comprehensive plan and they take ownership of it, I think we'll have things that will start to fall in line a little better. My compliments, again, for taking care of some of those things. Our concern is, as we go forward, setting up a precedence. And we have other people that may not do the steps that you have taken. And so it's very important that I think we follow this, we address it. And I go back to that comprehensive plan. And if we use that as a guideline, I think we're going to solve a lot of our problems as we go forward, whether it's the height, whether it's the signage, whatever it is that we're trying to accomplish. The purpose of that comprehensive plan is to take care of those problems so that we don't have to. And I think if the businesses take care of that, we're set up forever. But that is a beautiful gateway to our city, beautiful gateway to Mount Rushmore. It's important that we take the steps now to guarantee that that stays that way. So again, my compliments for you to take the steps. And I appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Rachel?
Yeah, first I want to, you know, I want to say that I'm kind of excited about this project because, you know, I guess I'm part of the target audience, you know, boutique hotels, but in an affordable range. That's, you know, I think it's a great project. I have a couple of questions, I think primarily for staff. If we, you know, I appreciate the work that they're putting into making this more, you know, a better kind of like neighbor, you know, to the residents nearby. And they mentioned a couple of things. One was putting a dimmer on the LEDs. Another one was putting the dampeners on. And I'm wondering if we can make a stipulation, if that's even legal for us to make a stipulation, saying that they have to have dimmers on, starting at 11:00 PM or something like that.
Madam, Mr. Chair. Certainly, we could add something that said that the lighting had to be as per their operational plan. We don't know what that plan is as we sit here right now. But policing that would be almost impossible. So that, there lies the problem with that. Even signage or LED signs that we see throughout the city are constant issues with our code enforcement division because of they're required to have those automatic dimmers. And as the night darkens, the lights are supposed to reduce. But you could, if it's your intent, you could add a stipulation.
Okay. And then my other question is primarily, what we're really voting on right now, you know, the issue that we all have with this is the LEDs, right? It's this light in an area that's a corridor that, you know, and I agree with the dark sky initiative, that's very important. But what we're really voting on is the height.
Mr. Chair. So Rachel, you are correct. There's really two discussions for you today. One is, should a hotel be constructed on this property? Our recommendation is, yes, approve it. They're also asking for an exception, which is to allow a height of ten and three-fourths inches above the forty-five feet, and that it be allowed to be designed, as they propose, with lighting and signage. So your initial conversation should probably be to address the exception first, and then we can go to the recommendation of the project as a whole.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Kurt?
Yeah, I'm going to echo what Rachel talked about and also what Vicky mentioned. You know, we're looking at, you know, the height exception, okay? We're talking about, you know, the brightness of the lights and lighting up the night sky. The Glow people have, you know, graciously said that, you know, they'd install dimmers and, you know, parapets and pointing lights downward and timers that would dim them down. What I'm wondering is how, and like Vicky said, it'd be almost impossible to enforce it. I mean, maybe at first, they'd have everything just set right. And then, you know, the Globe management comes in and they say, you know, we need to turn those lights up a little bit. And, you know, it needs to be brighter. And how does, how do we protect that night sky and the neighbors around there from what our, you know, the intention is, the height exception, but we also want to ensure that the lighting isn't obtrusive. And I'm not so sure we can enforce that. Is there sign ordinances that lay out, you know, like, you know, can we set lighting level restrictions?
Mr. Chair. Within our side code, if this were an LED sign, which this is not an LED sign, there are specific requirements of what that would entail. This is a little unique because this is actually just exterior lighting. So you'd have to be creative in how you worded that. But there is language within the ordinance that does identify how bright those can be as the night sky darkens.
What do we do with, like, a parking lot like Walmart or something? I mean, are they allowed to just light up their parking lots as bright as possible? Or are there restrictions on how bright those lights can be also? Just for an example, I mean.
Now, that's a very good comment. There's a provision within our ordinance that says that all lighting shall be designed so that it shines downward, that it does not shine onto adjacent properties and onto right-of-way. But you won't see typically a parking lot security light that would be forty-five feet high in the air. And I think the issue here is, you've got lighting. They're going to cap it so that it shines down. But if you own one of the adjacent properties, that light's pretty high in the air.
Okay. I guess that's all I had.
Thank you. Galen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So first of all, to the applicant, thank you for bringing us a hotel that's not just sort of standard box. It's nice to see some unique architectural features. I think that's a big benefit to the community. Again, the blade is the issue here with me. And I think I just picked up from Vicky's last comment that because it's externally lit, it doesn't apply to the sign code regulations. The only square footage that counts as sign code is the internally lit sign. So I guess I'm kind of struggling with that. It does seem like a lot of light to put out there. But that's what I'm struggling with now is, and I also wanted to clarify, what's the height that the applicant is requesting with that revised elevation? I know it might be different than what's written in the report, just for...
So it's my understanding, and Kent, please correct me if I'm wrong, the maximum height allowed is forty-five feet. And with this design, they are proposing forty-five feet, ten and three-quarter inches. So it's the ten and three-quarter inches that we're talking about.
Gotcha. So it's less than a foot, the exception. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Cozy?
Thank you. The ten and three-quarters, that's because of the sign on top, correct? Or is it that the total building height?
It would be for that ninety-five-foot area that is a revived, revised blade design of sorts. So it would run ninety-five feet along the top of the building. It would be lit, capped down. And the signage at one point would be included in it. And I can certainly put that graphic up again, if that would help you?
Yeah. While you're doing that, the lights keep coming up. And is there an option to do similar that has been done to the front, where the lights are designed to point down more, yet they're still seen by the public? Or, so it looked like there were lights on the building all the way around to really kind of light it up. But maybe there's options to continue to working with lighting? I also have to mention that I did talk to Casey Peterson. I would be remiss if I did not, just momentarily. He wanted to make sure this letter that he sent got into, he sent it, I believe, last night. And so I did have a short conversation. Told him I really could not talk too much about it because I would have to recuse myself if I did. But I did talk to him, just short.
Mr. Chair. So in looking at this elevation, we're talking about this area. Oh, this doesn't draw right where I'm trying to here. But it's the part that would extend above the roof line and would include that sign. This is kind of the ten-foot, ten-inch, ten and three-fourths inch area that we're talking about. Boy, that's a lovely graphic, isn't it? So they are already capping the top of it. That's already a part of their design. The discussion for you folks today is, as I pointed out earlier, you have allowed, the previous elevation was a wall. That was a four-foot wide by ten-foot high by a hundred-foot long wall. What they're proposing now is a parapet. And you have allowed parapets over entranceways into hotels. It kind of lets the traveling public know, hey, here's where you go to get inside the building. You've allowed that. The precedent you may be establishing today is if you allow that part that's above forty-five feet to be illuminated and to have signage. And that was the point I was trying to make earlier in my presentation. So as you look at granting the exception to the height, and from staff's position, the ten and three-fourths inch height exception, we would recommend to approve. But we could not support the illumination or the signage on that portion of the extension above the roof line. And I hope that kind of clarifies how your conversation...
Do you have the picture of the hotel in reference to the lighting? Now, are those lights on the side there that comes off the building? Is that what that is?
Yes, it is. But those, again, that picture is done as a proportional item. Those lights on the side of the building are really recessed into the insulation going around the building. And they also will have the same lights that shine down. So basically, all you're doing is lighting up a strip on the building. Because it'll be recessed into the insulation, the drive-in that's going around the building.
Does that go around the back also, then?
It's on, it's on this, as you see it here, it's on the stairwell section and on the other stairwell section, on the west side. I don't think there's anything on the back.
Okay. Thank you.
Further discussion. Kurt?
I guess I was looking at the staff report, and I thought the... I guess I was looking at the staff report, and I thought the maximum height proposed was fifty-six feet. Now, that's changed to forty-five. Okay, so it's forty-five feet, ten and a half inches.
Ten and three-fourths inches.
Okay. All right, that was my only comment.
All right, Galen?
Another clarification, as it's proposed now, does it meet the sign code? Is that what you're saying? Or is it because that LED is above the forty-five feet, or a portion of that is above the forty-five feet, does that cause it to be in compliance with the current sign code? Or as it's proposed, does it meet current sign code?
It's a wall sign, and the amount of signage does not exceed what would be allowed. This property abuts Mount Rushmore Road. There's an extensive amount of right-of-way that they can use for linear footage that then gets doubled for square footage. The issue before you is, when you're granting a height exception in an area that's, as per our comp plan, recommended that we maintain low-profile design, is it appropriate to have signage and lighting above the maximum allowable height?
Above by ten and three-quarters inches.
Forty-five feet. Ten and three-quarter inches.
So if I got this right, Vicky, first thing we need to do is decide whether we want to grant the exception, ten and three-quarters, and we can do that, but we can do it without the wording if we choose so, correct?
So the motion maker would probably, would have these options. If it is the desire of the planning commission to acknowledge the applicant's compromise of reducing the height down to forty-five feet, ten and three-fourths inches, that you grant the exception with the condition that the part that exceeds the forty-five feet not be illuminated or include signage. Or, you could say, that the exception be granted as proposed, which does include lighting that is capped and designed to shine downward with signage as shown.
So everybody clear on what we're talking about here? All right. John Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I hope the commissioner will give me a little bit of latitude here, hopefully you don't mind if I chime in. If you do, let me know. Anyway, I just had a question for you, Vicky, real quick. This ten and three-quarter inches that we're talking about, if this was not included into the building, would they have just been able to pull a building permit and build?
So because it sits within a plan development designation, they had to go through the final plan development process, but an exception would not be required for the height if it did not exceed the forty-five feet.
I guess my question more is in the signage. If they had met the height code, would we be talking about this signage right now, other than possibly the brightness of the lighting? Or, you know, because I'm sitting here and I'm listening to this, and I'm looking at, you know, this business has already taken off how many feet of this building to make this work for the city of Rapid City? And I commend the developer, I commend the engineers, the majority of the businesses that I work with, you start moving a building and changing it this much, they start looking at somewhere else to build it. So I really have to commend all the work that they've done right here, and everything that they've given up in what typically would be a normal build, in a normal building, in anywhere but maybe Rapid City. So, anyway, thank you very much.
John, further discussion. Do I have a motion? Okay, I got a motion by Rachel. Do I have a second?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, we couldn't hear the...
Rachel, could you?
Sorry, I didn't have my mic on.
There you go.
I said I'd like to make an emotion to approve the height exception with the stipulation that the lighting not be above the allowed, the allowed by code.
Ten and three-quarters?
No, not the ten and three-quarters, but the forty-five. So the additional ten inches cannot be illuminated, and there cannot be any signage above that, and I'm open to staff or any other recommendations.
Do I have a second for that? Further discussion, I have Galen.
Maybe just like to hear from the applicant if that's even possible, because it sounds like if we don't allow lighting on that upper ten inches, then why even have the ten inches? Because then you just have a dark strip, so I don't, I guess I don't see that working. It's a great idea in any other case where you don't have an illuminated strip up there, but I would prefer just to have the motion with allowing it and letting them do the lighting as presented, but I won't make that at this time, I guess.
Mr. Chair, if Rachel doesn't get a second, Galen could make a substitute motion.
Galen said he wasn't ready to make that at this point in time.
Thank you.
There's not a second here, so let's do that. Okay, I got a motion and a second, and the motion is to allow the ten and three-quarters and to allow the lighting and the signage, correct? Everybody clear about that? Further discussion on that, I have Mike.
I believe these gentlemen have just, I like to hear what they have. It looks like they're chomping at the bit to say something on the lighting, so I would like to give them that opportunity.
I want to, I want to both Galen and Rachel, Rachel's kind of suggestions, I'll go back, I want to put this back on.
And just to clarify while you're doing that, the motion is to allow the ten and three-quarters and allow it to be illuminated, that's the current motion?
Yep, yep. I just, there's a compromise. If, when we talked and we first presented this, the distance between these two points is probably already six inches, so of the ten and three-quarter inches that we're discussing, excuse me, that upper very six inches is covered with the screen for the LED lighting. And so it kind of is right in the middle of where you two are both at.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to approach the dais, it's a little bit easier to see it when it's not on the overhead. Okay, thanks.
And like Mike just mentioned, it really, to use this dampener, which is, I think, all that completely takes care of the emissions into the sky, the ten inches is really inconsequential, except it is to us and to the brand because of just how the design will be, the piece that is illuminated basically is what it is. I mean, it's as low as we can go.
Thank you.
You can see how that shield would lay, you know?
All right, currently, we have the motion on the floor, is to allow the ten and three-quarters to be lit and the signage to be there. Does everybody understand that? With that, all in favor say aye?
So, just for staff's point of clarification, so Galen has made a motion, it's been seconded by Kurt, to grant the height exception to allow a forty-five-foot, ten and three-fourths inch building in lieu of forty-five feet with lighting that is, has a damper and is designed to shine downward, and that it incorporate a dimmer design, and that the signage also be allowed as proposed. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
What's more? All in favor say aye? Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, we also, I believe, Vicky, have to go back to the project itself, correct?
That is correct. Now that you've addressed the exception, staff is recommending that with the exception as approved by planning commission, that the initial and final plan development be approved with the balance of the stipulations as noted in the staff report.
Thank you, Vicky, and I have a light with Mike Cozy.
The only question I had, Vicky, is now that they have that over the top, they can't go back and make it a full light. At some point, they have to go through us to change that, right?
Because you made that a part of your stipulation, in order to change the specifics of a stipulation, they have to come back to you folks for a major amendment.
Thank you.
That was the intent of making sure that that language was so detailed.
Again, my compliments to any business that tries to work inside of our comprehensive plan. I think it's, that's where our success comes in, and as the engineers and architects buy into the plan, I think we're gonna have a lot of good stuff come into the city. I think it's important that we develop, I think it's important that we grow. So, my compliments again, and hopefully it takes care of the community.
Thank you, Mike. I am looking for a motion. I got a motion to approve, I have a second. Okay, and I got a second. All in favor say aye? Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Karen, take over.
Thank you, Steve. That was a really good discussion with everybody, so I appreciate everybody in the audience and all you planning commissioners to get through this and make good motions. Okay, we will go on to item number ten, then.
Item number ten is a major amendment to a plan development to allow an oversized garage, file number seventeen PD zero-three-four. Property is located at twenty forty-nine Harney Drive, and the request is to allow an oversized garage and an height exception to allow a height of seventeen feet nine inches in lieu of the maximum height of fifteen feet. Give you an idea of where it's located, on Harney Drive, property's own low-density residential district in a developed residential district in the city. Currently, there's a single-family dwelling with an attached garage located on the property. Future land use is low-density neighborhood, and from this map, you can see that it's west of, or east of Sheridan Lake Road, and that's where Harney Drive comes off of. Here we have the site plan showing the location of the proposed detached garage on kind of that west side of the property. Size of it is one thousand three hundred sixty square feet. Total garage space on the property will be two thousand four hundred and ten square feet, which is nine hundred and ten square feet over the maximum allowed, one thousand five hundred square feet. Looking at a couple of things, setbacks are being met. The proposed location is behind the front of the house, which de-emphasizes it as well as, you'll see later, the topography goes downwards in this direction, so the height exception, you'll see that it's, even with the height exception, it looks, it de-emphasizes based on the topography, the size of the garage based on the house. Floor plan, the height exception is required, is needed because the garage door is to fit in a recreational vehicle, so they need that additional height on the building in order to get that in. Here's a rendering from the applicant. Like I said, the topography in the area means that even with the height exception, it's below that level of the house, and de-emphasized, and as well as the location being set back a little bit behind the house, de-emphasizes. Architectural renderings, you can see that higher garage door on this one in order to fit that larger vehicle. Here we have a picture looking at the site. Sign posted on the property, that's the location of where the garage would go. There you see the sign. The elevation of this area, the other residential developments, looking west along Harney Drive to the north and to the east, and the cul-de-sac in the area. Staff is recommending that the exception to allow a height of seventeen feet nine inches be granted, as well as the conditional use permit to allow an oversized garage. Are there any questions for staff? The applicant's consultant is...
Okay. Steve made the motion to approve this item, and Kurt seconded that motion. Do I have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. At item eleven.
Item eleven is seventeen VR zero-zero-seven, a vacation of right-of-way request. I'll give you an idea of where it's located, on, for a portion of Cherry Avenue and East Franklin Street, located east of, east St. Joseph's Street, adjacent to a property which addresses sixteen oh-two Cherry Avenue. Property's own medium-density residential district, as are adjacent properties. Here we have an aerial view, although it shows the house on this picture being within that area, the house is not encroaching into the right-of-way. The applicant's intent is to vacate some of the right-of-way in order to obtain a little more property in which to put a fence up. Future land use is urban neighborhood. You can see Cherry Avenue butts railroad right-of-way, and then to the west is east St. Joseph's Street right-of-way. East St. Joseph's Street is identified as a principal arterial street on the city's major street plan. And here's the exhibit. One of our main concerns when this was brought forward was the location of the existing water main located in Cherry Avenue, and maintaining that distance between the proposed, what would be the new property line and the location of the water main. However, once the application was submitted, Public Works staff has identified that the master, or utility master plan for the city identifies a future water main and sewer main extension, which will take place on this east side of Cherry Avenue. And so the right-of-way may be needed in the future for that water main and sewer main extension in order to get it within that area between the street and the property, and maintain those distances for being able to maintain those mains. So staff's recommendation is to deny the vacation of Cherry Avenue. However, we are recommending that the vacation for the portion of East Franklin Street on this north side be granted, and the exception, or the stipulation would be that prior to city council approval, a revised exhibit be submitted showing just the vacation of East Franklin Street.
Okay. Any discussion? Galen?
Just to clarify, you said the applicant intends to put a fence up, that's the reasoning for it, so basically, because it's a front and side yard, there's a required setback for the fence, and they're just trying to get some more land so they don't have to come back? Is that your understanding of the situation?
Yeah, there's a lot of discussion on the fact that they could have a four-foot-high fence on the property line, but in order to have a six-foot-high fence, it has to be set back ten feet from the property line in what would be the second front yard of the property, which is Cherry Avenue. So that's kind of their intent, what they brought to us. We didn't actually get to speak to the property owner, it was the consultant that was letting us know this, and I believe it's security issues for the property, or perceived security for them.
So they could still put a four-foot fence without the, or four-foot fence on the property line, is that correct?
Yes.
It's just to get up to six and you have a little more setback, okay?
Okay, Rachel?
So I'm not quite sure what our powers are here. Would it be possible to grant them the vacation of right-of-way for Cherry Avenue as well, and then make that additional area an easement so that they can't build on it, but it's still accessible to city for working on the water main?
I'll defer to Ted Johnson with Public Works.
Thank you. We did consider that, the, this corridor is identified for a large diameter water transmission main, as well as a large diameter sewer transmission main. It takes additional space to get those in. If we granted an easement, then we are working on private property, even though it's an easement, we would have to remove and replace whatever's there. The fence would more than likely end up on top of the utilities, we'd have to tear it out to build anything. So it just doesn't seem like a prudent use of public property, public funds to do that at this time. If those are installed, we could look at, revisit this some point in the future, maybe, and look, given some of that right-of-way up, but right now, it didn't make sense. Doesn't, it's not a good use of public funds and infrastructure to trade right-of-way for easements and then assume that additional responsibility and costs.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, thanks, Ted, Mike Kozny.
Now, if they put a privacy fence in here, does that cause a blind spot, such as overalls or whatever, looks to me like it's, it's on a corner, so if you put a privacy fence with a wooden fence, if they could, if they want to, does that cause that blind spot to happen?
We did speak with the applicant regarding the, that intersection, and doing everything they can to avoid the, putting a fence within the site triangle, and, and so they are aware of that, and if they were going to be putting it in, they, they are aware of where they cannot put it in.
Okay, thank you.
But I'll, you know, the sign, or, building permit is not required for a fence under six feet in height, so it would be more of a, something that, the fact that they talked to us about it and worked through it with us is something they're aware of, and...
Right, but the six-foot would cause a, if you're in a car, it would cause a blind spot if you had a six-foot there.
Yes.
Rachel?
Oh, that was all, thank you.
Okay, Kurt?
Yeah, I'd like to, excuse me, make a motion to approve the right-of, vacation of right-of-way for East Franklin, and to deny the Cherry Avenue.
Second.
Okay. Kurt made the motion as per staff recommendations to approve east St., East Franklin Street right-of-way request, and deny the one for Cherry Avenue, and Steve seconded, any further questions from the commu-, uh, planning commission? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Okay, discussion.
So, we do have some staff items.
Okay.
Just wanted to let everyone know that this is Steve Rollinger and Gerald Sullivan's last meeting, we'd like to thank them for the service that they've provided the city, volunteering and sitting up here at Planning Commission, you guys have done a great job, the discussions that you bring to topics, there's always room for compromise, and that's when I think that we serve the public at its best, and today's meeting is a good example of how you guys truly vet things, and you don't take your decisions lightly, and it's greatly appreciated, we'll miss both of you, Steve, you've been around a long time, you're gonna have to stop in and say hi, so, help yourself to muffins on the way out, we just so greatly appreciate all that you've done.
Steve has a comment, too, Vicki.
Thank you, Vicki, and I just, I just wanted to say, I have been here a while, but, and I was here before it seemed to have gotten so public-friendly, and today is a good example of that, where Fletcher gets up and talks about why we should be approving this, you got up and spoke, spoke to, this didn't happen in the past, and we couldn't be a planning commission without, I mean, the amount of effort you guys put into this, the, the city of Rapid City is, is very lucky, and I can say that with all sincerity, I did send a letter to the mayor, basically telling him that we could not operate without the input, in fact, you help us with the motions, and that is just absolutely incredible, we get great legal advice, the fire department's always part of the, of the process, and so I can just say, I thank you very much from the, from the bottom of my heart, that we could not be here without you, so thank you.
And I echo Vicki's comments about Steve and, and Gerald both, I, I think this is kind of a sad-sweet day, kind of, you know, but, thank you both for your service, and we're gonna welcome Mr. Vidal soon to join us, so, I'll, I'll let you go forward, Vicki.
So, the mayor has, and council has confirmed two new Planning Commission members, one is Vince Vidal, and he, we invited them both to be in the audience today to just kind of see how work gets done, and the second one, and I'm gonna apologize to Justin right now, it's Justin Van Gruff Shepke, and I apologize, I'm sure he can help us learn how to pronounce that once he gets here, they will be, Justin will be alternate number one, and Vince will be alternate number two, that means that as of the start of next meeting, Mike Kozny and Rachel move up to permanent Planning Commission positions, so thank you for putting in your time and waiting to see if you got to vote or not, just also note that at your second meeting in October, once we get Justin and Vince on board and get them to understanding the process a little bit, then it will be election of officers, and so, if any of you are interested, speak amongst yourselves, let each other know if you'd like to hold a position, and October twenty-sixth, at the end of the meeting, we will have an election, and the last thing I wanted to make you aware of is that after a very extensive period, we have finally filled the position of the director's position for our department, and staff is so excited, his name is Ken Young, he's coming from us most recently from Utah, he has years of experience in planning, comes highly educated, and has been director in other communities, so hopefully, at our next meeting, he will be in attendance, and you'll get a chance to meet him as well, and staff is very excited to have that leadership role filled, so, that's all we have.
Okay, anybody at the Planning Commission have something they would like to add, other than, at the end of the meeting, motion? Okay, Rachel made the motion, and Steve, or Galen? Meeting's adjourned. Don't forget the muffins.